Fire away, Kevin.
All right, welcome to the December fifteenth Coos Bay School District Special Board Meeting. I'm by Chair Kevin Divizar. And we're with Chair Kim Brett. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda?
I will move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Arnie. Thank you, Addie. Do I have any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. So we're gonna move on to the interim superintendent interviews. I'd like to start us out by first welcoming both candidates, Brian Gardner and Ginger Redlinger. Um, if we could start with, I'd like to start with Ginger first. Um, each board member has a question.
It's a one way.
So we're gonna try and do like a little informal round robin. And then, uh, would like to do, um, hear from you and then give you the opportunity to ask some questions as well. So, um, let's see here. Ginger, are you ready? I'll ask you the first question.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, given the current educational landscape, how would you address technological advances? And integrate integration of innovation tech, teaching methods to ensure students are prepared for the future? And that's question number seven, if you have that printout.
Ginger, you seem to have frozen.
Oh, okay, my bandwidth in this room. Uh, I'm gonna go off camera. I mean, I'm, uh, to see if that works. It's, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Uh, well, there's a couple things. Within the changing landscape, I noticed that you have some innovative practices that you're putting in place in the district now. Including, uh, credit by proficiency. Uh, and, uh, related to math. And when I think of, uh, move, continuing to move forward with that, and specifically with technology, I know, um, I see math and I'm afraid of technology. And I feel that technology is, uh, kind of leading the rest of the economy right now and, uh, changes in, uh, in everything from, uh, personal communications to research. And when I think about things like AI, I'm very excited about it. And when I think about AI and putting, uh, proficiency grading together, then you have a model that allows students to focus on, their ideas, their questions, uh, their solutions, their logic. And, uh, to be able to present coherent thoughts and the building of ideas and, uh, take information that they gather perhaps from AI and then, uh, put it together to, um, explain what they learned, uh, by using the tool, uh, how it supported their thoughts, um. And, uh, what, what is next, but what they need to know as a result of what they learned. And to me, that integrates technology in a way that's meaningful for students. And also allows teachers to grade based on the process and the thought. Rather than focusing solely on the, the final product. Um, it's more integrated project. Uh, as far as access to technology, uh, we're still behind the curve on, uh, making sure that students have full access to, to technology even as it upgrades on, uh, pretty much a, a weekly basis. You'll see something new, uh, some way in which to do things. Uh, teachers are, uh, battling technology at times, uh, rather than embracing it. So helping teachers become more comfortable with technology is really important. And, uh, seeing it as an asset to their work rather than, uh, something that, that students have to be watched. Doggedly, um, about their, you know, academic representation, uh, using technology. Uh, I love robotics. I've, uh, started multiple robotics teams for the first robotics organization. I've been a judge for the FRC competitions and then to the world competition, um, with my teams. And, uh, I just, yeah, technology for me is just hand in hand with what excites kids. Um, what engages kids, what, what, uh, is leading an education, leading economy. So, uh, the more technology, the better. Uh, did I answer your question?
Yes, yep. Thank you very much. And then, uh, to help, since we're on this, uh, on the computer logging in. If we could maybe stick with the same question and then go with the next candidate as we go along, if that makes sense. So it'd be, uh, Brian's turn up next.
Oh, okay, sure. Um, technology is a tool, it's not an end. You know, um, Ginger mentioned proficiency and, um, I moved, um, central land to a hundred percent proficiency based. And it's been that way for almost ten years. Math is a real natural place. But I really think that technology doesn't take the place of good teaching. And it doesn't take the place of teachers understanding what good teaching is. Um, I think that, um, it all starts out with, and I, and I apologize if I'm, I'm going sideways on this a little bit, but I think it's, it's critical. It, you know, proficiency all starts out with what do you want them to know and be able to do? You know, and, um, and then how are we delivering that information? Where we found technology was really critical, especially in, in math. Um, as much as possible, we tried to, um, flip the classroom and, um, allow technology to be the lecturer, to do, you know, to deliver. And that gave us more time in the classroom to do guided practice. Right? Because guided practice is really what's, what's lacking. A lot of times we'll, you know, we spend an entire period in a high school delivering a math assignment, then we send them home so they could practice it without any support and without any, uh, you know, and, and then you get to come back the next day and reteach it because they went home and did it wrong, you know, twenty times. And, uh, so we used it to, to flip the classroom and we also use technology to, um, we used a program actually out of Australia called, um, MathWorks, um, or excuse me, MathSpace. And it was really designed to, um, create a, um, a natural struggle, I guess. Um, because, you know, according to Kavatsky, who's a, you know, educational god from the thirties and forties, he, he always said that we wanted to get kids at the zone of proximal, uh, uh, ability, which is the place between what they know and what they don't know. And so we use technology to, to help them do as much as they could on their own, give them hints, give them videos, give them, um, prompts. And then when they got to the point where they struggled, right, that's when you had the teacher that could come in one-on-one and bring them to the next level. So we actually instituted a math lab where kids were receiving a lot of the instructions from technology. And then we had a highly trained math aide and a teacher in every classroom. And they simply went around to these kids, individuals and in small groups that were, were roughly the same area. And help kids push over that, that, that gap between what they knew and what they did not know. Excellent, you know, s- use of, of, of technology to, to actually complement teaching and not try to take it over. So, and, and technology will change constantly. I am thirty years over being thirty years old. And there's, and there, even though I've used technology my entire life, I, I want the thirty-year-old to help me figure out how to best use the tool. You know, and, and from a superintendent standpoint, um, I, I don't approach this with, oh, I understand everything. I know everything. It's really about, um, and, and keeping them focused on the teaching aspect of technology and what, um, what and how those tools can be used, um, in, in a, in a productive manner. Does that make any sense? And then, and of course, access, right? I mean, if, 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 um, you know, we found out that during COVID, right? We sent kids home with, with Chromebooks and a third of them, you know, couldn't sign on. So, um, you know, we, there's a lot of things from the superintendent chair that we should be focusing on to make sure that every, every kid has access. Um, and that's really across the board. It's all about, um, removing barriers. So, does that come close to what you're looking for, Kevin?
Yes, thank you very much. And so, uh, I was trying to throw out the next order, uh, other board members here, who would like to go next for asking the question?
I'll ask a question.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and this is to both of you, I guess. How do you plan to engage with the Coos Bay School District's existing leadership team? And staff, uh, to maintain stability and continuity during the interim superintendent search period?
Just from a point of fairness, maybe Ginger, do you mind if we, since you had to go first last time, I'll go first this time and we'll alternate. So it's fair. Okay. Because I realize that that's an advantage. Well, I mean, and I've thought about this, the first, the first week, um, okay, the, the very first week is, is, um, I'm meeting with your business manager and meeting, uh, you know, with the executive, um, assistant. Meeting with all the departmental, uh, cabinet level positions. And I'm getting their read on everything. As far as the, the rest of the leadership, one of the things, it's not just the first week, but ongoing. I've developed, uh, leaders. In fact, one of the leaders is a superintendent up, uh, north of you about forty miles right now. He was my principal for, for seven or eight years. And what, what I find that leaders don't have the opportunity to do. Okay? Um, and as far as like all the current situation, that's all gonna come out in the, this process. I will meet with every one of your leaders a minimum of every other week, preferably every week for at least an hour. And we shut off the phone and we closed the blinds and we, we talk about what decisions, um, you made last week. What went well, what didn't, autopsy without blame. Um, it's, it's not about casting blame. It's about learning how to be a better decision maker. Um, and then we're gonna talk about decisions that are coming up. Um, we're gonna reflect on how they, uh, you know, the district spent the time to put together a strategic plan. Um, I love actually what your last superintendent, uh, said, you know, about your kids. You know, what's, what's their name, what's their need and what's their dream? We're gonna talk about how, um, each one of those decisions of, uh, you know, supports the strategic, um, plan of the district. Um, and then we're gonna spend some time trying to shoot holes in whatever it is. Now, first of all, I'm not telling them what to do. I'm asking them what their decision is. And then I'm gonna be probing them on, on why they made that decision. Um, possibly suggesting some, uh, uh, situational awareness that they may or may not have seen. Um, you know, asking which different groups that affects. Um, and trying to get them to do some metacognition on their own thinking process and their own decision-making process. Um, that sounds like kind of a cumbersome process, but I found that it's really the best way to make better leaders. Okay? Now, in that process, and I, and I know that we are sitting here today because, um, you know, there, there are some, um, behaviors that may not have been optimal, let's say. Those will get discussed and if they need to be discussed in a very frank manner, they will be. Um, I don't know what they are yet because I haven't been there. You know, and I, and I don't have a full lay of the land by any stretch of the imagination. But we're gonna do some personal reflection on all those things and, and try to figure out how, um, each one of those staff members can, can, um, not only excel in their own career, um, but, uh, become, um, you know, an integral part of the team. And, uh, because nothing happens without a team. Now, I will tell you upfront, you, you know, you go to the war with the army of God. And, and leadership is at a premium right now. So, um, I, I firmly believe that we, we make a great effort to try to, to, um, make the folks we have better. And to, um, and make sure that they can, uh, get on the correct seat on the bus and help us all get into the, into the right direction. Um, and I could go into a little bit of management theory and kind of how I approach things, but that's, that's for another time. But, um, to think that you go in and you clean house is, is, uh, folly. Um, it's, you know, uh, it, it doesn't always work well. Um, there's value in people and we just need everybody, uh, rowing the boat in the same direction. And so that's, that's how I would approach it. But it's gonna be a lot of one-on-one, um, frank conversations. And, and the nice, you know, and I've, I've done this interim gig before and the nice thing about it is, is I don't have an axe to grind. Right? So, um, it's my, my, in my heart, I'm trying to make each one of those people better leaders. Um, be it at Coos Bay or be it somewhere else. So hopefully that will, will, um, go a little bit, um, in, in the, the realm of trust, um, so we could actually get to the core of the issue. Um, you know, and, and if, if we're three, four, or five months into it and, um, we've got somebody that just doesn't wanna row the boat in the right direction, you guys will hear about it. And we'll go from there. So.
Thank you. Ginger?
Thank you, Addie. Uh, well, oh, I would say that my approach is, uh, relational. Uh, and I like to model the, uh, behaviors that I expect of the, the admin team. So, uh, the first thing that I would do is, uh, stabilize the situation. I mean, we understand that, uh, there's been disruption. And they need to see, uh, the, the interim superintendent is someone who is there to be part of the community. Who's there to, uh, engage with them, with the community. So they need to see me. They need to see me in the buildings, visiting with them and asking them to take me around and introduce me to staff, to show me their classrooms. Uh, to, to point out the things that they're really proud of and, uh, and brag a little bit. You know, tell me about the wonderful things that are happening, you know, in their buildings. Tell me about themselves. Uh, and, and build a relationship with each and every leader. Um, that would also include me saying, hey, who are, who are the first responders? I, the thing I need to do is meet all the first responders. What's the district's safety plan? What's the emergency communications plan? Uh, who has keys to what? I mean, I, you know, all that information to let them know that safety is my first priority for staff and students. So, so that they feel like, um, I'm embedding myself. And, um, and I'm setting up a, a positive relationship based on successes. And from there, then, um, once, once that occurs, um, I'd say, well, tell me about your partners. Who do you partner with? Do you partner with, uh, you know, who does your mentoring program? Tell me about your lead teachers. Tell me about the association. Um, introduce me to the association leaders. And then we're, we're doing this together. And it tells them how much I value all of us working together. And, and in the meantime, I would be setting up meetings where the first thing that we would do, uh, is get to know each other better. And we would do this through icebreaker activities, uh, where we would, we would talk about our leadership styles and what's important to us and, and the ways that we've been successful. And, and the ways, you know, the, like, uh, Brian talked about, the, the hopes and dreams. Um, and, uh, and then within that relationship, um, once it's established and the trust is there, then I can start, um, talking about uh, more challenging topics because I've set up a framework for that to happen. So, uh, yes, every, um, the other thing that, that Brian said that I deeply agree with is that leadership is hard to come by these days. And you, if you can help your, uh, grow your own and make them feel, uh, safe and valued and trusted and, um, believe that they can, they will. So, uh, that would be, uh, my goal in working with the staff.
Perfect. Thank you.
Adrian, would you like to go up next?
Um, sure. Let's see, um, all right, so this is our question number four. So I'm taking copious notes here. So Coos Bay School District values diversity and inclusion. Can you discuss your approach, um, to fostering an inclusive environment for students, staff, and community? Particularly in light of our district's demographic and cultural makeup?
Uh, yes, uh, equity, work, diversity, parent engagement, community engagement, these are things that, uh, work that I've done and value. I value it so much, I'm on the COSA Equity Board. Uh, because I wanna spend time helping them, uh, helping administrators embrace, uh, no matter, uh, what their backgrounds are. Embrace the idea that collectively, when we're serving all students and all families, that students will, will come out far, way far ahead. Because, uh, parents are truly partners. And, uh, equity allows us to try to find different ways to do things. In my former school district, uh, we really pushed, um, cultural proficiency. Uh, using, uh, Jaretta Hammond's work, if you're familiar with that, of, of culturally proficient practices. Which changed, it was a combination of that and neuroscience of understanding that when students are comfortable and feel like they're at home in school, they will perform better. They are more likely to learn. And the same thing with parents. When parents feel more comfortable, um, when they feel like they belong, when they can see themselves in the building, then, um, and see each other in the building. If there's parent meeting places, things along that line, then, then that goes a long way for equity and access, uh, to, uh, impact the district in ways that it's, it's looking to grow. Um, I noticed in the, uh, listening sessions that, um, students said that they'd, uh, like to see, uh, more posters of themselves in the building. Yeah, they're, uh, when they, when they walk in. And that was also something that, that, uh, I embraced. Uh, in my district is, as I looked around and, and helped the board understand, you know, that this is part of it. And this board understands what's going on. And it wasn't that my former board didn't understand, they just weren't presented the information. I showed a linear, uh, progression, uh, based on the enrollment by grade. Broken down by demographics and showed them that at the lower grades, the higher percentages of students were, uh, not demographically the same as the, the, uh, students that they had served in the past. Uh, such that it was, um, glaringly apparent that we right away in order to be able to serve those students. So, you know, that kind of awareness and building that awareness, not as a, as a gotcha thing, but as saying, hey, we all share the same heart. We want all of our students to be successful, to be happy, uh, to be good citizens, to, to feel like their time in school is valuable and that they're loved. And for that to happen, uh, you have to open your doors, you have to open your minds. And, uh, and that's a, that's a simple journey to take. Um, and you just have to make room for, uh, new things to happen. And, uh, make that a comfortable, uh, transition and not a, you know, you're doing something wrong kind of thing. So, um, access is another. Uh, I, the Star of Hope Program, I looked, I looked at that and I thought, wow, that's a place I've gotta visit, uh, right away. That's a, that is a fantastic, um, asset to the school district because it also provides opportunities for, for students who, who maybe want to, uh, go in and insist and be occupational therapists, uh, therapists or counselors or school support or, um, uh, you know, what is the trajectory? What are all the things that you can do? Uh, that place is a resource, not only for the students and the, the citizens that it serves, but also for the school in a way to show, um, equity, uh, equity, access, inclusion, um, in all of the programs in the school building. At, at every level. So, uh, anyway, so that's enough for now. So let me know if you need more information.
Is, is the discussion that, that I've had with the, the state multiple times is about language around equity. Um, I, I ran a school district in the middle of a grass seed field for eleven years. You know, and, um, and for the vast majority of that time, um, politics didn't exist in the boardroom. And it was focused on kids. And, um, and I think that's exactly where we should be. You know? And the way I dealt with equity, and I did tons of equity work. But it was all around getting everybody regardless of their take on, uh, a lot of the buzzwords. I'll be honest with you, I avoided them. Um, because I could sit down with somebody that may, may have issues with a lot of the buzzwords. And I would ask them the question, are we a public school? Do we take every kid that walks through the door? And does every kid that walks through the door deserve, um, the best shot at an education and opportunity going forward? And no matter what somebody's leaning was, that seemed like a reasonable thing. That yes, every kid deserves full access and, and full opportunity. And, you know, so really as an administration, the best equity work that we can do is to be identifying barriers to entry. What are the things that are holding kids back from taking full advantage of the opportunities that we're providing? And then we need to, to strip away those barriers. And to do so with as few labels as possible. Um, the other thing, and I, and I get it, you know, we develop programs. That's, as educators, that's what we do. But something that I always try to keep in my mind, um, when I was a young administrator, well, I wasn't that young, but a new administrator, I was a vice principal up in, uh, Walport. And I was coming in and I was trying to develop programs for homeless kids. And, uh, there's a woman up there by the name of Centilia McKinley, um, who had been doing work in that community for thirty years. She finally pulled me aside one day and she said, Brian, I want you to come to our breakfast, um, at the community center on next Saturday. So I went and had breakfast at the community center and the place was packed. There were a hundred and fifty people in there and, and I didn't know where they all came from. Um, and afterwards, we were washing dishes and she said, Brian, she goes, did you notice who the, was having breakfast with the mayor? And I went, no, I, I, I didn't really. And she said, well, that's the guy that lives under the bridge. You know? And she said, this is about community building, Brian. She said, if you build community and you build opportunity for your entire community, my kids get taken care of. Those homeless kids that you're worried about, they get taken care of if we build the proper community and we tear down the right barriers. But I don't need to make them feel any more different by making them enroll in a special program to do it. So it's always been my goal to, to focus on the removal of those barriers and building the community. And so people get served seamlessly because they get served because everybody gets served. The mayor got breakfast too. Right? Um, but they got to have breakfast together and they both got to see a sight of, of, uh, Walport that the other one probably wasn't familiar with. You know, so, so community building is huge. And, and I think that, and, and I, I won't go into it all right now. I'd love to share it with you sometime, but I, I did a little bit of work and, and have done some, um, seminars on how, um, how Maslow's hierarchy of needs relates to abilities. Right? So, you know, as an educator, you always hear that, that, um, you know, nobody, um, nobody cares how much you know until they know how much you care, right? Relationship, relationship, relationship. And, and that's true that, that with getting that far up the, 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 um, pyramid, we, um, And that's true, that with getting that far up the pyramid, we, kids then have the ability to learn, but they generally have an ability to learn on a very rote, almost memorization level, right? And that's what education was geared towards for the last 50 years, right? And with, you know, the new standards, the new standards are really asking kids to be able to differentiate and analyze and think, right? And if you go back and look at Maslow's hierarchy, that's almost a self-actualization skill, right? So the schools need to take a look at kids' needs, and it goes beyond free lunch, and it goes beyond knowing their name, right? We really have to take them to a level of understanding what their own dream is, that's why I love your name, need, and dream piece, because it's really helping them work on those dreams that really unlocks the mental capabilities to do what we're asking them to do. And I don't think that any district will ever find, you know, full success until we recognize all of those needs, and we recognize them as a community. So, I know that's kind of a weird approach to equity, but I really think that, I believe it from the bottom of my heart, that it's about identifying barriers and tearing them down and tearing them down for everybody. And if we can get everybody on the same page, that every kid deserves the best, then we're a long ways towards that. That's it. Did that come close to answering your question, Adrian?
Yes, thank you. That must mean it's Arnie's turn to ask a question.
I guess it will be, that's my dextrom thing with my wife. I'm in Eugene in a car on my cellphone, so I have to go back and forth from different groups to get the questions. So I'll go with question number five. As the interim superintendent, you may need to address immediate challenges while also planning for the long-term success of the district. How do you balance the short-term needs with and the development of a sustainable vision for educational excellence?
Well, first of all, you guys have done a lot of work as far as the sustainable vision goes, right? So let's not, you know, you're not, you know, as an interim, let's not start over, right? Let's honor the great work that's already been done. I think it's, and looking at your plan, I'll be honest with you, when I saw, oh, we just finished this strategic plan, I thought, oh, well, there's a notebook that goes on the shelf. And I read yours, and I went, wow, this is actually visionary and actually can be used. So let's start with what you have. And it's really about supporting that. Going back to the conversation with your current administrative team, is making sure that they're refocused on that, right? I mean, you've got the vision, it's, are they actually working towards it? So the work that we do with the administrators is a big deal going forward because what you're trying to do is embed that plan into your culture, okay? So I don't really see those as two different things, right? There's some immediate, immediate things that need to get done, but they're all within the context of where you're trying to go long-term. Now, you know, the practical issues, I mean, one of the reasons I wanted to meet with the cabinet the first week is, hey, you know, there's some conversations with your HR people and your business people, and I'm sure that there's a ton of things that are on their immediate agenda, right? And whether it's an interim or it's a long-term superintendent, there is always urgent, and there's also important. And it is always, is always a balancing act, to sometimes stop doing the urgent stuff long enough to also do the important things going forward. Urgent, you know, I can't go into detail, but, you know, one of the last interim jobs that I stepped into, I mean, it was, you know, the superintendent was on administrative leave, and, you know, there were things that, on the table, that were of a very intense legal nature. You know, one of the things that is attractive about Kus Bay is that this board has behaved very well, okay? In that situation, I got there and found out that the board was so intertwined with the misbehavior that I had legal problems on all aspects. And so, you know, I, I can't go into a lot of detail, but let me tell you, I've been trialed by fire, and I can handle any sort of crisis you've got, been there, done that. But we can't, we can't let the crisis, you know, this disruption in your leadership divert us from the long-term goals that you already have, and they're there. It's not like we have to redo all those community meetings you had, or all those surveys that you did, or all that wordsmithing that you did to come down to your basic stuff, what you have is solid. I would say it's a matter of continuing that and making sure that your leadership team is focused on that. And I think that it's also critically important that we would work together as an interim and as a board, using what you have done, along with my assessments, because, I mean, one of the things that I would do right off the bat is, you know, take a look at your financial, short and long-term situations, you know, the culture of your leadership, your staff, and your community. You know, take a, you know, look at your curriculum and your instruction, and where you're coming up short there, and where you're having successes there, including things, you know, and also taking a look at your facilities and so forth, and all of those different areas of your organization, coupled with your strategic plan of you telling me where it is that you want to be, right? We're going to assess those things, and we're going to look at the needs and the talents and the skills of who you should be hiring as your long-term superintendent. I wrote a white paper six or seven years ago for COSA, kind of designing what I thought an interim superintendent should be doing, rather than just treading water for the time that they're there. It's really an opportunity to focus the board and focus, you know, assess the needs of the district, look at the long-term strategic plan the district already has, and mold that into what your search is going to look like for long-term leadership.
Thank you.
Hi Ginger.
Hello, let's see, a couple of things. When I think about the immediate, the urgent, and the things that need to happen in order for continued progress to occur towards goals that the district has set, I'm in agreement with Brian that the integrated guidance that you have on the website is a really good plan, that the four goals that were set are spot-on. Put that in mind. I would say for balancing the time to make sure that people stay focused is the main way in which to approach the balance of the immediate versus the long-term. You always triage whenever there's a conflict in the things that you want to accomplish and the things that you must accomplish, you ensure safety first. So if anything's a safety issue, everything else is off the table, you secure that. The second thing is that you solve problems at the lowest level, to make sure that things are, you don't take on too much, or other people don't take on things that they should not be handling. The third thing is to make sure that you've removed distractions from the schools. So if you can offer any support via communication, or a team, a safety team, or a support team as needed, everything from suicides to bomb threats, as you were very well aware of recently, all sorts of things can impact the learning environment. And goal number one is to make sure that that learning occurs, schools are safe, and that learning occurs every day at every school. And removing all distractions, if possible, and then staying focused on the goals. So within all that, then you prioritize the work, knowing that once everything is stable and secure, learning is occurring, then you can keep working towards the items. And as far as my priorities, it's in that order, safety, security, schools functioning, students are learning every day, staff feels good about their work and being part of the Kus Bay School District, that the board feels like its input is valuable, and that they really are leading the future of the district. And keeping everyone focused so that when it does come time to prepare for an interim, that you're ready to go, that everyone feels like, okay, we're ready now to go from an interim to a permanent superintendent. I don't know what that timeline looks like, I am not in any hurry. I will make sure that everything's going as needed so that the best process can take place.
Thank you.
Back to you, Kevin.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, well, and we also have our superintendent, Dave, online, or did you want to chime in any, Superintendent Dave, or, I see your screen's muted.
No, thank you, Kevin, that's not necessary, this is the board's interview, and I'm very comfortable just listening in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've moved over to the board discussion items, number four. Do we have any board discussion?
Well, I have another question.
Okay, go for it, Addie.
Budget management is a critical aspect of the superintendent's role, and can you discuss your experience with financial oversight and your approach to resource allocation to ensure the district's financial health remains good during the interim period?
Bottom line, yes. I would say that the financial oversight and stewardship of the district is the number one priority for financial investments, investments in personnel, investments in facilities, investments in learning programs. Number one, you must have a significant carryover from year to year to ensure that the district will be able to provide education throughout the year, address cost of living increases, address emergencies, building fires, whatever, you know, the things that happen. I have worked closely with one of the best chief financial officers, Linda Murray, who is currently on the statewide salary committee, where they're looking at teacher salaries, and she's also one of the most transparent chief financial officers. And she and I partnered on making sure that when it was time to do a market analysis, see if our pace was reasonable and comparable, so we didn't lose staff, we were able to do that, making sure that you allocate funds enough to keep your staff, because turnover is very costly. Making sure that you've funded, that you have a list of things that need to be done so that you have the right funds that are in the right categories that can be used over the year is critically important. Managing the, oh gosh, is it 145 different grants that are available currently through the Oregon Department of Education, through, you know, via the feds and everything, from the title programs on down to legislative grants to other grants that are available. Making sure that all of that is balanced and maintained, states, schools are the only entities that must have a balanced budget and an audit every year, making sure that all the steps along the process and the business management practices are in place, so money going in, money going out, everything is allocated and managed over time, that changes are, if changes in spending from category to category must be done, that the board is made aware of that, and that they have to move to, like, for example, if you need to change some of the ending fund balance and take a half a percent away in order to do something that came up as an emergency, all of that has to be done by the board. I'm very familiar with GASB, I'm very familiar with the annual processes, I've been living that for all my time, whether I was, even when I was a charter school director, I had to manage that as well. And I've learned from two of the best, Tim Belanger, who used to teach school finance at Lewis and Clark College, which I did not attend, but I worked with him, and as a charter school, I had the K-12 IB school, I was responsible for the budget from stem to stern for everything. And he taught me well, and through my superintendency, I've also learned that, I've also worked at ODE and had to manage National Science Foundation grants and other things as well, and in the charter schools department, so there is some financial responsibility and oversight there. So I've had experience from multiple chairs in multiple roles in order to make sure that the district is a good steward of its resources, and is not only planning for annual expenses, but three, five, 10 years, and thinking about the future. Because when you go out for a bond, your bond rating will depend on how solid your finances are, and what it's looked like over the years. And that's, your reputation through the bond market is very important too.
Thank you. Brian, you're muted.
Well, I guess if I'm muted, I can't say anything dumb, isn't it? It's always a plus. My first degree was in business administration, I had a 17-year career in business, including owning a couple, three of my own businesses. And then I went into education at 40, and I became a superintendent in 2011, and Arnie could tell you how wonderful that was from a funding standpoint going on. I inherited a budget that, and a staff. The staff was horribly underpaid, their benefits were horrible, even back then, we were paying $600 a month for healthcare, when everybody else was probably around $1,000. So it was very difficult to keep anybody. And I started that year on the tail of the former superintendent telling the board and the community that everything was wonderful, that all the contracts were settled, that their financial situation was healthy, and that there would be no layoffs. And I had to borrow $300,000 that June, literally like the first day I was there, in order to make sure that June payroll checks did not bounce, okay? And then managed that budget to a slight, very slight, I'm talking, at that time, about a $6 million budget, we ended up with a $26,000 positive ending fund balance. That was also after the, we had, they had just given two administrators who I could not put in a building without having a right two administrators, who I could not put in a building without having a riot amongst my teachers. They had just signed them to three-year contracts, so we had to figure out how to help them on their way as well. And then I managed all the way through that next five or six years that was very challenging in the state of Oregon. And one of the things that I learned in that process is that we talk about budget. But budget is a one-year process. It is the superintendent and the board's responsibility to be thinking not only about budget, but about finance. We should be looking at three-to-five-year plan, as well as a one-year budget plan. For instance, when all of the extra Esser money and things came into Central Lynn, the most important thing to me has always been that a district is sustainable, right? I mean, it doesn't do us any good to build the best programs in the world, and then the grant funding goes away, or something goes away, and then the program disappears. And that's what most districts do. So sustainability of effort has always been really key in my outlook on these things. So when the Esser money came along, I'll be the first one to tell you, they didn't tell me I couldn't supplant, so I did. And I started looking at a five, six-year view, knowing that the legislature, having watched them over the years, were going to short districts on state school fund, because they were going to say, well, you get SSI, and you got all this federal money. And I knew that that federal money had to carry me for at least three years beyond the time of which the federal money ran out. It had to last longer than Portland Public and Salem in order for the public pressure on the legislature to increase school funding for it to take place, you know? So when I left Central Lynn, I left Candace Peltz with Central Lynn at the end of, I believe, the '22 school year, her carrying out my financial plan. You know, they had well over $1 million in reserves on an eight-and-a-half-million-dollar budget. And they'd been able to maintain all the programs and all the things that we started over time. So I guess my other level of experience, I spent two years as a mentor of new superintendents for COSA. So I have worked on probably 30 other budgets around the state, helping new superintendents, because that is something that we don't get enough training in the typical administrative programs on. You get a little bit on, and it's amazing to me how few boards and how few superintendents really understand the three-year cycle of school funding. And when you do budget, that all should be taken into account. So you're looking at something beyond budget, you're also looking at finance long-term. And people are going to do stupid things out there. We just have to make sure it's not us, right? And that we try to anticipate, and this is an area where you need to be politically astute, understanding where the pressures come from in the state, and where you position yourself in your own finance. You know, I understand that you folks have some monies that are disappearing over the next year or two, and that you're going to have to find efficiencies in your system. And I'll be the first one to tell you, if we have awesome programs that need to be maintained, we need to be very opportunistic about how we save that money over time. Attrition's always a good thing. And teaching people to develop their careers by wearing multiple hats is sometimes necessary. And it's actually usually a pretty good thing, because you end up with an organization with a lot of cross-training. So, yeah, budget, finance, HR are all things that I feel real comfortable with. And, yeah, we'll go from there. And, you know, I encourage you to get on the phone. I mean, I gave you a half a dozen people, but there are more. Call them. Ask them if I know anything. So, thanks.
Kevin, can I ask one more question?
Go for it. Go for it, Addie. Thank you.
In the interim superintendent role, effective communication is crucial. How do you plan to keep all stakeholders informed and engaged? And how would you handle potential communication challenges or conflicts that may arise during your tenure?
Ginger, I lost track. Is this mine or yours?
I think it's yours.
Okay. Well, I mean, the first thing that I would take a quick peek at is what communication channels currently exist, right? I mean, because, I'll be honest with you, for a superintendent to maintain communication to all stakeholders as a lone entity is a very difficult thing to do, right? So, you know, especially when you're talking about, and I'm not opposed to community letters and things like that, that we can put in papers, and that we can email out to parents for, depending on how good our email list are and so forth. But, you know, it's pulling my administrative team together and say, okay, what channels of communication do we currently have? You know, getting everything out to stakeholders. And we're going to utilize those first before we go out and create more, you know? It's vital that your team knows what's going on, you know? And that the communication amongst your team is clear and transparent, and that everybody's hearing the same thing, right? And that includes the board. I think every board member should be hearing the same information, right? There will be times in a board meeting where somebody will ask a question, say, of a business manager. And I've done this in the past, and it was never intentional by the board member to try to trip anybody up. But I would interrupt and say, that's not information I would expect our business manager to have at their fingertips, per se. But let's research that piece of information, and we will get back to you individually this next week. And then we will also take that information, we'll dispense it out to the entire board, right? And if it's something of a public nature, then we also need to make sure that it is somehow, you know, clearly transmitted to them as well. The bottom line is, because the channels may vary. But the bottom line is, is that I don't have the ego that says I have to be the keeper of all information. If you're going to build a team, that you have to make sure that you're communicating and talking on a regular basis. I mentioned earlier about the individual meetings with administrators. I would also think that we'd have to figure out how to have, and I'm not sure what the timing is appropriately, but we would have to have, you know, some pretty regular administrative meetings as well, so everybody's on the same page and hearing all of the same information. Yeah, I guess I can't make it any more complex than that right now. It's just, it's really just a matter about not holding everything close to your vest. It's about sharing and talking to people, and, you know, and asking others how you're doing, right? I mean, you know, and you can start with your administrative team, asking them that, and, you know, are people feeling connected? If not, why not? Let's adjust, right? But I'm not going to design your communication system, because I don't know what's there now.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, and building on that, I would add that I'm used to operating, as far as my style of communication is to make sure that people have the information accurate, reliable, and trustworthy information from the district at all times. The first group that needs to have that information, because they're usually the first to hear it, is the board. So if a conflict comes up, and there's some inaccurate information or information needs to be shared, I make sure that the board has that information first. Then I work with the comms team to make sure that that information is shared out to appropriate channels within the district that are used. For example, I know that your buildings have websites and newsletters. And that is a vehicle for the district to say, please put this in your newsletter. Here's some information from the district to put in your newsletter. So that's one way. The website can have a rolling update, and people can subscribe to updates on the website. So as soon as there's an update on the website, we'll automatically go to their email or their text message. And then as part of the bigger communications team, there should be a group of people who serve in a cabinet-like role. And that can be a rotating role at some point, so everyone has a chance to be on it. And what that does is you have a weekly meeting where, at the beginning of the week, you say, what are our challenges this week? What's the communication we need to send out this week? What are we going to accomplish this week? Here are some new tasks coming from ODE. How will we divide them up so that these tasks get done? Who are the right people to do this work? And then you coordinate, and you keep a running log of all the activities and things that are happening, so that you can keep track. And that also, you can use that information for communication if something should come up immediately. And then you should also have an opportunity to have students in journalism write articles about the schools, and to promote goodwill and to share information with the community about things that are happening in the schools, so that the community can remain engaged and be excited about that. Perhaps even flyers that go out. It depends on how the community feels. I know in our community, my private, primary, previous community was very different than the one before. In the North Marion School District, they wanted a three-by-five card. They didn't, black and white, do not waste money. We want the info, but we don't want you to waste anything, spend any more money than you have to. So I appreciated their approach, and we made sure that they received those cards on a periodic basis with updates that they needed as a community. And then in the Oregon Trail School District, different. They wanted all information electronically, newsletters, and they wanted all the information possible in a bulleted list, so that they could click on the bullets and get more information, should they desire, kind of thing. So you kind of ask your audience what they want to know, how frequently they want to hear it, what format is accessible to them. And then whatever they tell you, you make sure you deliver that information to them in that way. That builds trust, it builds reliability, and it also serves to keep the wheels of communication going. When it comes to conflict, sometimes people will put things on Facebook. They have a disagreement with a teacher. Then someone can, if put, depending on how that works in the district, someone can say, place on that same post, if you have a question about this, or it seems kind of one-sided, please contact the school and get it for free, call the principal, if you think that, you know, whatever. So anyway, trying to refer it back to the school, rather than keeping it in the community and letting the community blow up over something that may not be true. So that takes a little proactive management, but it's very important to be reactive and not ignore people's concerns. So that's my input on that.
Thank you. That's it for me, Kevin.
All right, so do we have any board discussion, item number four?
I'll just say that I have really been impressed with both of our candidates. I appreciate their taking the time to be here with us, and that I enjoyed hearing other people's perspectives about how to run a district and do the things that need to do. And I think I felt clearly that both people have a good understanding of what it means to be an interim. They're not changing the world, they're making the world work. So I appreciated that from both of them. So, any other discussion?
I guess my only question is, Ginger, Brian addressed it in his cover letter to us. What would be your intention about either moving to the district or part-time, full-time during your interim superintendency?
Well, I'm very much interested in the Coos Bay area. And I love that kind of a setting in place. So I'm open to that. I would think that I might rent an apartment or a small house or something. And I still have my property here, which is a small farm. So I may try to work out a schedule where I'm there four days a week, and up here one day, working from here, rather than, you know, working down there. But I would be there the majority of the time. I think that's really important for building the stability necessary and the trust, and to be embedded in the community, to be accessible. I want people to know that I'm there. If I get an invitation from the mayor to have breakfast at 7:00 o'clock, I want to say, yeah, I'll be there, you know? I want those kinds of things to happen. And truth be known, Arnie, close your ears. I am a huge fangirl of Arnie Roblin. Anything that he's ever done to me is something that is like, if this is what Arnie did, then that's a worthwhile thing to do. And if Arnie, you know, Arnie did, grew up in Washington, and he came down here, and he loved it there. So if that's how Arnie felt, and that's how part of the community, that's okay for me, too. So, yeah, so, yeah, so I'm sorry I didn't put that in the letter, but, yeah. And then, like I said, with my intention as well is, I think the board needs to decide when they're ready, when the community is ready to go out for that permanent superintendent. So I'm not going to set a timeline on that. I'm going to be available until, you know, my commitment would be, until you are ready to go out for your search, I will be willing to serve in that role. So if it goes into the following year, I will commit to that.
Thank you.
I also feel very comfortable with both candidates. I think either of them could help us along the way as we move to the next step, which hopefully will be soon.
And to that extent, Dave, what are we, what is our next steps? And do we need to do phone-up follow-ups on some of the recommendations? Like I said, what do we do as our next step?
I'm sorry, Arnie, who was that question directed to?
To you, if you can help us with that.
Yes. So typically, the board members who were coordinating this interview are assigned to reach out to references for both candidates. I know that some of that reference check work has been completed. But Kevin, I'm not sure if all of it has been completed or not. Can you tell the group?
I've completed about 75% of Ginger's, and then half of Brian's.
Okay.
So then I think the question before the board of directors is, do you want the board members to complete those reference checks before you make a final decision as far as who you would like to select as your interim superintendent? Or do you want to hear if there's any issues or concerns that occurred as a result of those reference checks, and make a decision during this meeting? It's really at your discretion at this point.
I have a point-of-order question. If you would like, I would volunteer to leave so that the board can deliberate among it. So I know it's a public meeting, but would it be easier if Brian and I left the meeting so that you can... but would it be easier if Brian and I left the meeting so that you can continue? Or would you like us to stay on?
If that would make it less awkward, I would be more than willing to leave as well, Ginger, you know?
I think that would be helpful ultimately.
Okay, well, then I very much appreciate your time, and it's been nice getting to know you.
You, too. Thank you.
And that was very nice to say, Ginger. And Brian also, it's nice to have known both of you, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity, and, you know, it's an honor. Let's go from here. Happy hiring.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that was nice of both candidates to go ahead and drop off this meeting. The process that you've selected to engage in is to have a very public process of interviewing and having that public discussion as far as who you would like to hire as the interim superintendent. So really, I do think that the question before the Board of Directors is, one, do you have enough information at this point in time to make a decision? Or do you want to have Kevin and David finish the reference checks, send an email to you as far as what they found, and then we'd have to have another special meeting in order to make that selection publicly?
I think it's good to do the due diligence, and from my perspective, I would love to see that stuff get done, and then have that email, you know, out to us, and then have another special meeting. I think that would be, from my perspective, that would be best.
Do other board members want to weigh in as far as the preference?
Has anything arisen so far that would raise a specter of concern?
No, so far, the reference checks have been equal and supportive, and nothing alarming at all. I was just waiting to hear back from a couple of them.
Yeah, I don't have a problem waiting, Arnie, and then having another meeting.
Will the board members be available for a special board meeting in the next few days?
I am, sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
It'd be a virtual meeting, of course.
Right.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Yes, and I'm not the type of person to rush into things by nature. You know, but given what we know, you know, we've got a small pool of interims to look at, and we know there are other districts who are looking at that same group of people. So I would just encourage that process to go as quickly as possible.
I would assume the goal would be to have another meeting of the Board of Directors in the next few days. Definitely this week.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Which pretty much leaves it up to tomorrow, unless we want to do it in the weekend. But I would love to have that, if we get the information back, I'd love to have that happen tomorrow.
Yeah, me, too.
Yeah, and I probably misspoke, so I apologize. So if it's not tomorrow, it would be Monday, of course. Get my days mixed up. It's been a whirlwind of activity this week.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So for this meeting, we're looking at Monday? Or do we want to know when Kevin's... Do we know when we'll have responses, or have that process complete? I just hate to post a meeting today for Monday and then not have that information completed.
Yeah, I'd expect it to be done. I have their cell phone numbers, so it's been pretty smooth so far.
So Monday or tomorrow?
Tomorrow's Saturday, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, Monday.
I could probably... Yeah, I could probably do Saturday, it'd just have to be in the afternoon, I've got wrestling in the morning.
I would recommend giving Kevin and David just an extra little bit of time. If Monday works for board members, just not to push it too hard for them.
Yeah, sounds great.
Then I'll look into a time on Monday, likely around this same time, if that seems to work. And I'll check with the other board members. And then hopefully, Kevin, you can get that information kind of wrapped up and sent out to the board prior to Monday. Is that doable for you?
Yep.
Okey-dokey?
Sounds good. All right, so that's everything that's on the agenda. Do you guys have any questions during, before we adjourn?
No.
So the rest of this is going to be kind of the similar, usually awkward public process, where we have whatever discussions in our meeting, and then start making decisions?
Yep.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, it's actually a little bit easier on Zoom than in person.
There we go.
Okay, perfect.
Sorry, I will leave out about scheduling a virtual meeting for Monday, around 9:00 AM will be my first choice.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Oh, you know what? 9:00 AM's not going to work, we have cabinet. So I'll shoot for after cabinet. So probably 10:30 will be what I'll... I'll look at the calendar, but that's what I'll probably go with.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right, well, I think that's everything on the agenda. Thank you, everyone, for coming in and logging in, and there's a meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.